Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 12, 2024 Lackawanna City Council Caucus and Meeting. The meeting will start directly after our caucus session. The caucus session is designed and is used as an opportunity for the council members to review each of the agenda items and have a discussion amongst ourselves, ask questions, debate, whatever the case may be. And then the formal vote would be taken at the formal meeting that follows the caucus. In going through the agenda, which I will do now, the first several items are administrative, and we don't need to get into those. There is a section for hearings from citizens that will take place at the regular meeting to follow this caucus. There is a sign-up sheet on the podium for anyone who wishes to speak. If you would just sign your name on it, we'll call you forward. And the rule is that you're usually limited to three minutes. We don't follow that strictly, but it is something to keep in mind. With that said, I'll move directly to communications from the mayor. It's Agenda Item Number Three, Mayor Fowler, Request City Council Approve Her and Council Member Surtai to Attend New York State Fall Conference of Mayors being held in Saratoga Springs, September 16 through September 20. Any council members wish to comment on Item Number Three? If not, moving to communications from Division/Department Heads. Item Number Four, from our city attorney, Request City Council Approve the Ordinance Regarding Compliance Orders with the City Code Enforcement Department. And John, you made your request for our viewers and for the public that is present. Is there anything you wish to expound on that as far as what the intent is?
Sure. The intent is to correct how people are served with the documents or the code violation. And there was some confusion among, there's three different codes in the city code that involves service of either a building violation, a code violation, which could be commercial or residential, then also the fire marshal. So what we're trying to do here is bring some uniformity to the process, to the service process, and people will be able to be served via certified mail, in person, or via nail it or post it to the actual property, and then send a copy of what is posted via regular mail. And it's that last segment that is being added to this because it was only in one out of the three codes for service. And what we want to do is make uniformity throughout, and that's why this is before the council.
Thank you, John. Any council members have any questions or comments on Item Number Four?
On record, would a record always be live and active in the Department of Development or in code enforcement? Or the individual, in the event that they lose it or have any questions, it's accessible to them at a later date?
Yes.
And would that entail their fines that may have accrued in the meantime? Like, would it always be live and active?
It should be. It's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And also, is it subject to FOIA if neighbors? Because a complaint that I seem to always get is, I keep my property up to par, I go far and beyond, and my neighbor doesn't. And I try to stress that although their neighbor doesn't, doesn't mean that they're not in violation or haven't gotten any, you know, sentations. So there are times where the neighbors are curious if they can get that information, considering we are FOIA. We have to stand within that and make sure that these things, these ordinances are accessible to residents because of it being a government agency.
Sure. So my answer to that is, I believe it is susceptible to FOIA and FOIL because it's a business record, and we keep those records. But if for some reason, and code enforcement is a civil act, it's not a criminal act. But there is somewhat of the New York State penal law that plays into the actual code enforcement. So when it comes to FOIA and FOIL and the penal law, you cannot FOIL such documents because there are exceptions, and that would fall under that exception. So to make a long answer even longer, I'm going to say I have to look at it, but I believe that it is susceptible to FOIA and FOIL.
Okay. And in the event that private information is to be shared, I assume these would be redacted to basically protect the violator in this situation? Whether it be phone numbers, things of that nature?
Certain personal information is, but name and address would be there because it's just like in the county clerk's office. We all see transactions of real property, and everybody has the right to know who lives...
But not social security numbers and things of that?
Dates of birth, or even phone numbers, I think we could probably redact.
Any other questions or comments on Item Number Four, the related ordinance attached, Item 4A? Moving on to Item Number Five, the agenda of City Attorney by City Council. We guarantee the name changes of the seasonal recreation attendants to the title of Playground Watcher for the 2024-2025 budget year. On July 30, 2024, civil service changed the title of Seasonal Rec. Attendant to Playground Watcher. I believe this is for informational purposes only, would be received and filed, is that correct, John?
It is. And just the backdrop, though, recreational attendant was used for both Playground Watchers and that only work a few months a year, and people at the senior center that work year round. And so what we wanted to do was to make sure that Playground Watcher was a Playground Watcher and that the Rec. Attendant are now the people who work year round at the senior center.
Thank you. The council members have any comments on Item Number Five? Moving on to Item Number Six, from our city attorney. Best City Council approved the closed fire chief contract for August 1, 2024, through December 31, 2027. And obsoled by the executive, John, you have a position on that?
I do. I'm withdrawing that from the agenda, and I will do, or I'll do that officially during the meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Number Seven, from the Fire Chief, Fino, Request City Council Approve the request to advertise forbids for confined space fire equipment and direct the city clerks to advise for bids. If you have any comments on this?
He hasn't told me what specifically their equipment that they're looking at, but he wants to.
Yeah, I believe it's, he's got the funds for it.
Yeah. He's already got everything set. He just wants to get the okay to put out bids.
Any council members have any comments on Item Number Seven? Moving on to Item Number Eight, Department of Purchasing. Nickomado requests the City Council approve the ordinance transferring funds to different development accounts from 2023-2024 budget line for the replacement of second code enforcement vehicle, and is beyond repair. Mr. Nickomado did include a notification from our DPW, and the inspection of the vehicle indicated that there is an electrical failure that cannot be repaired, as well as other physical shortcomings for the vehicle that make it unsafe to continue to operate. Dan, I don't know if you have any further information on that?
I do know it was, that vehicle was sent to the dealer and to another mechanic shop, and they couldn't, they couldn't fix it.
Mr. Council President, during the budget process, unfortunately, this situation was not known to us, or else we would have put it in for your evaluation. Then, as luck would have it, this vehicle was actually assumed by the code enforcement folks, I believe the former mayor used his car for his personal, I'm sorry, for his business use. So when it came, it was already used with a fair amount of miles on it, and served them well for a while, but then now unfortunately, just the repairs were beyond anything that was fixable. And unfortunately, it came in after the budget process. So we did have some unspent money from the prior year, and that's what this is going towards.
In my opinion, that's an understandable circumstance. It does happen. Machines do fail.
Yes.
But thank you. Any council members have any comments on Item Number Eight? There is a corresponding ordinance attached to this, Item 8A. Moving on to Item Number Nine, again, from Department of Purchasing. I'm now requesting City Council approve the agreement with Civic Plus for their mass notification system. So we replace the Code RED system, which will end on September 2 of this year, and the Civic Plus system is $3,000 less than the current system. Civic Plus, as noted, is also New York State contract pricing, and this had been budgeted in the new budget, so the money is in place. Dan, or do you know anything, Chuck, anything on that?
I will say that this is a definite upgrade over the system we have today. Code RED, the system that's in place right now, was really only intended for like weather emergencies and things of that nature. But as media and communications have evolved, the system has become like a marketing tool, and it's just not meant to handle those types of notifications on as frequently and as complicated a basis sometimes as we do them. So this new system is certainly up to speed with current technology, gives us a lot more flexibility.
Thanks, Chuck. And I'll just, I beg your pardon, I'll just call on Gene Oliveri, RIT guy. Anything you want to add on this? This is in your bellywood, right?
A lot of the problems we're having with the current Code RED system is the database that we have of all the numbers. A lot of times when we do the calls, we get calls from everywhere else saying that we're getting the mass calls, so we might be able to wipe the database in this new one should help with that.
I'm a member of the mayor, why don't you go?
Oh. I was just gonna say that I was talking to Mr. Nickomado on Thursday, and he said this system's a lot better, a lot of the other areas, towns and cities are using it. And what's unique about this is, say there's a water line break by our house, instead of calling...
Again?
Pushing the toilet.
That causes its own problems.
What it is, is they could just block off and just call our area and that whole city. So it's a lot better. So that's just one thing I learned about.
And it's less expensive.
Yeah. Well, I've heard too.
I would be curious if this can tie into this, say, program that we operate on for emergencies to connect the three, I believe it's the DPW Law Enforcement Fire. Does this have any ability to gel with that at all?
I'm not sure.
No, no, because these would still be recorded messages, Amira, you know, scripted messages, I should say, and recorded. So in my view, the two would work, well, the one, the public safety system and the system would work parallel.
Anyone else have any comments on Item Number Nine? Now, moving on to Item Number Ten, from Chuck Clark, Director of Marketing and Public Information. Request City Council approve the amendment of the Alliance Drive land contract to Empire Building Diagnostics modification revises. Original sales parameters approved on September 25, 2023. And what has come to light, Chuck, and I'll give you a second to expound on that, is there's less land involved as a result of a roadway that is a public thoroughfare that actually does take some of the property they thought they were buying away from them. So there needs to be an adjustment in price.
That's correct. When this was before you, last September, the deal was 3.38 acres, at 25,000 an acre. So that was an $84,500 proposal. And at the time, we did not know that part of that 3.38 acres included A Street, which is the access road into that facility, and it's the only access road in there. So when you take out the portion that accounts for the road and any related easement, it brings the sale parameter down to 2.72 acres at the same 25,000 an acre. So the deal is now $68,000 instead of $84,500. But this does not change the scope, magnitude, or impact of Empire's project. This is simply, is removing the road from the acreage of the vine.
Yes, thank you, Chuck. Any council members have any questions on Item Number Ten?
They don't feel that it'll impede on their ability to operate, that doesn't define them?
No, not at all. And in fact, it would impede the entire footprint of Alliance Drive more so if somebody had a privatized piece of the public roadway, because you do have the building owned by the Dave and Hated group right at Alliance Drive, right before the old bridge into Bethel Park. You know, that's a fully operating building. Brian Fitzpatrick has closed on his deal for a portion of Alliance Drive. So you're gonna have, at present, once Empire closes, hopefully in the next 30 days, you'll have three different owners and multiple different tenants in that area. So to privatize any portion of the roadway would be problematic.
And just to clarify that, Chuck, so there's no confusion out of the public by virtue of the question that was raised. Empire Building Diagnostics has not tried to back out of the purchase as a result of the reduction, right?
Not at all. The conversation really was, what is the best approach to managing the roadway and access for all? But their project, as I mentioned, has not changed one iota in terms of scope and importance.
Thank you.
And they're anxious to close.
Yeah, very good. Any other council members have any questions or comments on Item Number Ten? Moving on to Item Number Eleven, Director of Public Safety, Dean Morocco, Request City Council Approve sale of 2021 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle Proceeds Will Be Placed in the Police Operating Budget. Director Morocco, anything on your end?
They have, the police chief has advised that it's over 100,000 miles, and they want to keep their Google Patrol Cars up to snuff and get something for the car before just the wheels start coming off.
Okay, thank you. Any council members have any comments on Item Number Twelve? Moving on to Communications from Citizens, Item Number Twelve, Panel I B D O. Library, request City Council approve proposed resolution to move forward, secure funding through New York State Library Destruction Eight Program for replacement of boilers and hot water heater. And direct the mayor and library board trustees provide all necessary signatures, documents, and documentation for the application process. I think many of us in this room have a special affection for our library. It is one of the gems in the city, and it should be actually, in my opinion, a preservation item. So I think it's incumbent upon the city to cooperate and to fund appropriately the needs of that building so they can continue serving our community. Any council members have any other comments on Item Number Twelve? Yes, I do, Mr. Council. Sir? The city will only be liable for 10% of that money because of the construction eight grant that they're applying for. Very good.
Yeah. Unfortunately, this is long overdue. It's, we've been afraid winter to winter, if the heating and cooling device is gonna blow out. It's had its issues. It's been on its last leg for quite a while now, and we're so anxious to get this done. And we appreciate the mayor for working along with Pam Adholm, the executive director, to get this to where it needs to be, and hopefully we're able to operate expeditiously because winter is coming. And not just this, but also coming down the pipeline is the potential to have the library renovated at the state level expense, where the city is only going to be liable for a very small portion, and we can even get funding for that as well. So...
You mean the roof and windows?
A lot, yep. Those, it's in phases. There was, there was a study done on the building, which was, I believe, a $50,000 grant was issued, and the most important aspects were prioritized, and the roof was one of them, the windows, partial of the windows, and I believe the heating and cooling system.
If I recall, there's only a few of the windows that remain to be replaced, right?
That is correct. But also preserving its historical integrity and making sure that it's not completely taken a different course or a different appeal. So having all of those things at heart while doing this part is important, but also just making sure that we preserve our library and making sure that it's still somewhere where we can all enjoy. It's been a long time coming, so I'm happy to see this on the agenda.
I think we all are. Thank you. Any of the other council members have any comments on Item Number Twelve, Communications from Citizens? There's a corresponding resolution 12A attached to that. Next, Item Number Thirteen, from Louis Ayala, resident. Request City Council approve the closure of block, including Pearl Street between Steel Owana and Wilkes-Barre for an outdoor kids' activity event hosted by La Gnesia de Deos Inc. This event is scheduled to take place on August 17 of this year, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Anyone have any comments on that?
I was hoping to speak with Helen Ayala in regards to this. Pearl Street is a very narrow street in First Ward, which is kind of landlocked, houselocked, residentially locked. There's cars on both sides of the street sometimes, just based on the residents alone, absent of any events. Closing off the street from Wilkes-Barre to Steel Owana would just, it would paralyze all the families there for ingress and regress. How would they be able to move and operate if the streets are closed off? What would that look like? And what safety is there ultimately if people are still able to enter and exit with moving barriers? Having children outside on the street on Pearl Street in the summertime, not a good idea, not a good idea at all, especially if you're not allowing any exit space or even allowing the appropriate notice to the neighbors to figure out a Plan B during that day, especially of giving the allotted time of, I believe it was noon to six. It's a large portion of the day, right in the middle of the day, and when people are doing back-to-school shopping and trying to get their ducks in a row, it's...
Well, I don't know if they'd be doing school shopping if the kids are all outside playing.
Not the...
But anyway...
Not the children that live on Pearl Street, though. They're not part of the event.
Have, has this organization spoken with all the residents on the street?
No.
You know that for a fact?
They haven't. I have four family members that live on Pearl Street, and they have not been informed of this particular event.
I just looked it up. There's like 20 houses on that street.
Within the email, paragraph three, I guess there was supposed to be someone inserting where it says, "Mention safety measures." I believe that was not addressed within the email. It seems like it was supposed to be filled in, but that's not something that was explicit in the email.
What we've done in past events similar to this was made the approval condition on not having any rides or events directly on the roadway, but on the surrounding properties so that in the event emergency vehicles or whatever had to cross over the particular roadways, there would be no impediment to them doing that. And that was, I believe, your recommendation for prior application. I do believe the circumstances would apply here. Now, the roadway would be blocked through traffic, but not to the corresponding residential traffic, people who live there. So regardless of how narrow or wide the street may be, the hope is they don't park on the streets anyway. So that, in my opinion, doesn't raise the issue. So I don't see how the residents would be, would be impeded in any respect if they could still travel to and from, they just have to be appropriately cautious when using their vehicles, as happens on other streets when we close them. We just closed a portion of Odell, and that was the same thing there. People who needed to get in and out did so without interfering with the function, and the barriers do call to mind and to the driver's attention that there is an event here and there's a roadblock for a reason. So extra caution, I would think, would occur to most drivers to be exercised, but, you know, it's up to the council. I'm sorry.
The design for Odell Street is a bit more, it's wider, and not just wider...
But don't misunderstand me. The street, it's not just Odell. We've located other streets for closure.
We have, and in those situations, it was the actual residents that were part of the planning and part of the safety. This is, this is not that situation. This is strictly an entity who is only operational on a one-day-a-week basis. They're not residents of the street. They do have a church, which I respect wholeheartedly, and I would love to see their functions. However, the residents are not part of the organization of ensuring safety or making sure that they park their cars elsewhere. They're not even informed. And with respect to Odell Street, majority of that street is parked. You have Taggart Field, which takes up a voluminous portion of Odell Street, and there's very little residential, and that was able to be blocked off to where the homes began. So they weren't impeded about entering and exiting, and it's been very smooth in those types of situations.
Well, this is...
If this was a reflection of that, I would be in great support of it, but I can see this not being able to...
And this is your war. Did you reach out to Ms. Ayala?
I have not. I have not. There is a phone number to reach.
Wouldn't that be the appropriate way to proceed then?
That is true. I was on vacation up until last night and unable to, once we get these, when we get these, it's what, late Friday, early Friday morning? I was out of town. And there's no...
Director Morocco, do you have any position on this from Public Safety?
Well, this was the first that I've seen of it. There's been no contact or communication via email or telephone that this was gonna go on and what we need to prepare for. So I would, I would have to check with DPW if they have, if they're doing barriers, Captain Kukuleka for any kind of patrols that might be needed there.
Well, the council would direct the direction of the barriers to the Department of Public Works. John, anything on your end that might be helpful in deciding this?
I really have nothing to say, other than streets have been blocked off and barricaded before. On the other hand, I've never heard of the concerns that I heard today. That's all I can add.
Well, any other council members have any position on that? If not, then we'll come up for a vote, and then everybody's entitled to their vote on this. All right, moving on to business registration. Clavantina Gratacos Spiritual Lives Botanica LLC, Spiritual Education and Literature, 723 Ridge Road. The only question I had on this, and the name Botanica appears in the LLC title, and I don't know what that means. Are you?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if I read it.
Well, we hadn't intended to address the council at this time. Did you request, did you sign the sheet?
No, I didn't. I wasn't sure. I just heard my name, and I just got it.
Can you briefly tell us what this is regarding?
So it's a retail shop, and I basically sell products to like spiritually cleanse crystals...
Like what kind of products?
Crystals, sage, candles, oils, herbs.
What kind of oils?
Essential oils.
Are there any cannabis oils?
No. Dren free, everything.
So we don't have to concern ourselves with the word Botanica, encompassing other psychedelics or whatever that case may be.
Absolutely not.
And the same thing with herbs, you just said...
Spiritual herbs like peppermint, sage, those kind of things.
Great.
But not natural.
Any council members have any questions?
Sir Councilman, just for clarity, this is the vacant storefront across the street that used to house Michael Barnes's produce shop. So she's replacing that open retail space.
And you looked into it, you signed off on it?
We did. We did. But the fine zoning and planning was good with it. She did a nice job with her presentation, so.
I just thank you for being here, and... I just thank you for being here, and we'll take a vote on that once the regular meeting starts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Along Business Registration, Baba Amba Timbo, One Auto Repair Ford, Automotive Repair and Technology, 1212 Abbott Road. Any council members have any questions? Who's that?
That's the old auto store at the Dorans and Abbott Road. Jack Atkins or whatever, but I forget the name. But years ago, it was a Ford dealership from Benning, Downing, maybe?
Anderson Ford.
Anderson Ford, yeah, whatever. But he's a one-man shop using one of the bays to do auto repair.
Did you go out to site now?
Yes, and he also came before for site plan review, so totally good.
Any other questions on this application? If not, then we will...
Council President?
I'm wondering if we could go back to item 12 real quick. The fact of the matter that we have two council people who are on the board for the library, I recommend that they abstain from voting on that if a vote is going to occur on the resolution and the three remaining council people address it. Just until I figure out whether there's any inherent conflict of a library board member voting in support or against something that pertains to the library.
Not only is that probably a good idea, but it does say in the application that the board trustees are to provide all necessary signatures. So I'm assuming that means the board trustees also sign this application, so if they're members of the council, that would be more indication of a possible direct conflict.
Right, so they definitely please abstain from the vote and let the other council people address. That's my request.
Yeah, I was actually going to entertain that during the motion to recuse myself from the vote. Moving forward, I have no reservation in participating in the vote. However, I would like to ask council, can I still input my insight whenever we have these discussions during the caucus?
Correct, yes.
I can still do that, both myself and Carl?
Yes.
Okay. As for signing any applications, is that something that we wanted to get an answer about from us today? Because as of today, we have not signed anything. However, I do understand that there is a potential conflict that I would not like to muddle.
I'm sorry, I just would like to make this comment. I think, in my opinion, it creates an inherent conflict of interest, in particular because we vote on funding issues directly involving the library, and furthermore, we vote on a budget that may include funding or votes that may positively or negatively impact the library, the building itself that the city owns. So while today's vote, if you two abstain, still gives us a quorum of three members, assuming all three of us vote for it, I would assume it still takes three, right?
Correct.
To pass this. If it doesn't, that creates its own issues. However, what I'm getting at is if this is a budgetary consideration and we amend a proposed budget, say that the mayor makes, and that budget is vetoed, our amended budget is vetoed, it comes back to us for an override, we can't meet that, because you can't vote on that budget if it affects the library's functioning. So that's something I think that needs to be addressed, maybe in the future, as to whether or not a member of the council should even be out of the vote.
Our positions were appointed by the mayor, as well as the other board trustees for the La Guana Library. I do understand your concerns. I have those same concerns. It does present a predicament where even whenever we are operating as library board members, and the question of potential improvements done by the city, that we understand the building is owned and operated, excuse me, owned by the city, operated by the library, it even infringes on our ability to discuss things on the library board. So there is some clarity that I would love to hear. Maybe I can sit with the mayor, as well as Attorney Vaughn, and maybe go over some, as well as yourself, so we can maybe figure out what we are entitled to as library board members versus city council members. But I do understand and respect that refusal or abstinence from our vote today is in order.
So I would just add, looking at these in other capacities, you're recusing yourself from both boards when it comes up. So when the library wants to put something before the council, you let everybody else decide that, and then, you know, here in the city council, it's the same thing. Anything to do with the library, it's let everybody else decide. And one of the risks, though, of having two members of the council on such a board is you can meet the quorum, but if you have, if you can't meet the three-person quorum, then it fails. Like, that's all. But then somebody could bring it up the next week, or the, you know, the next meeting or whatever, and continually bring it up. But, you know, it would continually fail as a result of two people have to recuse themselves ethically. There's only three people, so it's only going to pass with a 3-0 vote, or it doesn't pass. That's what happens. Or somebody resigns from one position or the other on either side, either the council or the library. And, I mean, the easiest would probably be resigning from the library.
Yeah, well, I think the fact that everybody's open about a potential conflict is good step forward.
I agree.
So can I ask you a follow-up question, just for moving forward, being on library board? In the event that I do choose that, would I be able to engage in conversation and recuse myself from votes as well?
Correct, same thing. You can always discuss. You just can't have the authority to make the change.
Fair enough. And then, in the event that we do have this further discussion, I'm curious to know if historically has there been city council members on the board of library trustees? And how that, what did that look like in practice?
I don't know if that even matters at this point.
Yeah, but it is interesting to know, moving forward. Maybe there was already some research done where there was clarification on how to operate. I'm just curious.
I don't know if the issue of roads or anyone raised the question.
All right, but fair enough. Recusal, my part as well.
Well, when it comes time for the vote, then you can either recuse or abstain. In the meantime, we'll formally call a meeting to order for striking some amendments.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Will the city clerk, Chief Law?
McLaughlin, Private. Anderson.
Here.
Norady.
Here.
Surdy.
President.
Morano.
Here.
Law Department.
Here.
Development and Marketing.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Assistant Comptroller is excused.
Okay, under hearings from citizens, Mr. Ingram, you're up.
Good evening. A couple things. She was asking about, with any other council members on the library before? I was. I've been in the library several years. So, and I was only one at the time. There wasn't no two people, whatever, just myself. It was nothing ever said, nothing wrong with just a person like this, just being brought up. Number two, I think we talked about the event that they want to do on the street. I know, like your honor said, we have done it on several streets. We do it on Church Street every year. We let the residents know and to the first work councilwoman, she's right, all the residents should be informed, so they have a voice, and she might not have gotten information back to when she got back, you know? It happens. But we have done it several times, and it's a good thing. For the kids, I don't think it's just, I hope it's not just for one group of kids, I hope it's for all the kids, even those that live there. And I think that's the, I don't know, I'll just say, makes it tough should we reach out.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Jamil.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I had sent an email last month regarding two issues that we have in our community, and the two that I wanted just to reiterate or bring up today have been supported by our neighbors. Our neighbors are really struggling with the two things, which is the noise pollution and the manifestation. Particularly, it's really affecting our well-being, our health, especially throughout the world. Like, our health is at risk at this point. But just to focus on the first thing, the noise pollution is really getting to a point where we have to leave our home. I think that's like a distancing factor. When we have to holler in our own homes to hear each other, there is a problem. And so I am really grateful that the council has moved to have a differentiation between live music requests as opposed to indoor, which is great. I would ask that the council consider when there is a live outdoor request, that if neighbors have complained about the noise level, that you either deny or, like, really scrutinize that application, like, due diligence and really looking at that and the fact that it has on our well-being. I'm not going to go through all the details, because I have a petition here signed by the neighbors in Dell, Andela, and Shannon. And these are the direct neighbors that are having the experience and feeling what we've been feeling, with the frustrations of having to feel like we have to leave our home. Sometimes the music is illicit, and we have children, so we have to get the kid in the car and drive away. And it shouldn't be a way for us to live in an issue that, you know, they have a live event, which is great for them, but it's really bad for us. I do put in some notes in here regarding, like, some things you may want to consider, such as the source of the live music could be not against our property. So right now, it's like popped up right against my fence, for example. The band could be, like, towards the establishments, especially closer to my physical building than is to the establishment's physical building. So having some distance between where they play would probably reduce the disciples that were getting into our homes. So just some ideas to be thinking about, and I put some of them in this petition. As far as the manifestation, I know the county has, they've been putting baits up since we started complaining in June. Address is 327, 323, 321, the one next door to my camera for his house number, Shannon. We've all had batements put around our properties, and we're just finding a lot of dead rats, which is, I mean, my guess is working, but at the same time, we're finding still live rats, and I don't think the source of the rats are being addressed. So what we do is, like, we're cutting the grass. Before we cut the grass, we got to do a rat cleanup every single day. You can go to our properties, and you will find a rat. Now, I don't know what happened this year that made a big difference, but we had seen one or two every now and then in the past, now every single day, and the neighbors will also do the same. They are digging tunnels. My 323 Odell, they dug and uplifted all of the pavers from under the shandy. And in 327, they've dug holes so deep into their property, it's under the AC unit, and they're afraid of their foundation of the property. So it can't be just like a county problem. It's a city problem, it's a citizen problem, and we're asking the city to take under consideration some steps to mitigate it. Again, I've done some, a little bit of research. You all decide how best you want to address it, but it's a real, it's like a safety problem for us at this point, a costly one to bear. So we have nine residents that have signed this petition. I just asked that the city council please review it, take it under consideration. I'm happy to do our part. You tell us what you want from us, and we're happy to oblige, but really want to make sure that our well-being and our properties are addressed.
And Ms. Jamil, as far as the music or noise level, are you still experiencing issues with that? I know on the one hand, you're saying that some of the music is obscene?
Yes, yes, it has been, not the last two events, they were not obscene, but it's just like, we just don't know, like, right? Just until we're starting hearing the swear words, and like, oh, okay, pack up the kids, and we got to walk or drive.
I understand. And the other one was the level of the noise?
Yeah, so they have the pergola at Sunny Reds, and it's up against my fence, and their events are up against the fence. And so again, it's because my house is so close to that fence, they're actually farther. So the patrons in the restaurant don't hear it as loud as I hear it inside my house. And so it's like, they also have the dumpster with the rodent issue. We noticed that the rodent issue, despite whatever anyone else is saying, being someone who lives there, when the events increased in the yard, the rats also increased, hands down. Like, the cornhole events, the live events, the parties at night, they rent out the yard and offer events, it's all fine and dandy, and I'm actually, I'm happy for the business in La Guana, who want business in La Guana, but it shouldn't be at the expense of our well-being. That's what I'm saying. So they moved the dumpster maybe to the other side and away from the properties, away from the houses, because the shandy that I was just telling you about is right against the dumpster. And so if they're just going right under it from the dumpster, right into the property next door. And so if the dumpster's even moved, that may help mitigate some of it. But it's really affecting our property value, and it's affecting our well-being. And so anything that you all can do to help this, we greatly appreciate. I'm not one to just come dump problems. I'm really trying to find solutions, and I've tried to find solutions. I've put some in here. The residents have all agreed. If you all want us to do something on our part, we will do it. We did count the counties. We did that way before the recommendation was made. We're trying to our part, let us know what we can do. We cover our trash cans, we bought recycling bins with lids, like, maybe that was the issue, and it's just not changing. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jamil. You're welcome to submit your petition and any documentation. Do you want to give it to Jeanne?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Can I ask something?
Ed, yes.
Is this the double on the corner, or is this the house next door?
It's the, for all of the properties, like, it's...
I know. Where you live?
Which one? My house is the one directly behind the yard.
There's a double on the corner?
It's a double. They're all doubles. Those three properties from the corner.
Because I was over there a few times. There was an older gentleman there, and I was talking to him.
Yeah, so the, on the corner of Shannon and Odell is the double, the one next to it, and then the third one next to it, all three are doubles, and we all are, all of the ones that fit in as well.
Because they had a problem there a couple of years ago, and I made them clean the area up and everything. Somebody was feeding, somebody was feeding birds or something the day I was there. Was anybody doing that? As far as...
No, no, we made a pact, like, the neighbors in that area, we made a pact, no food out, cover everything. Yeah, and so the strange thing is, the rats are just oddly large. They're larger than my cat. It's just, I had one yesterday, I walked out my door, and it was right there, it was dead already, and it's like this, it's just, I don't understand, like, these rats are on steroids. I don't understand it, but it's scary.
Sure.
Okay. John, if you wanted to...
So first of all, nice to meet you face to face, as opposed to email. Second, the speaker situation, so I get you say the shanty is up against your fence, but then the speakers are pointing away from your residents. If they were to move the speakers, then the noise is going to flood those three houses, right? Isn't, I mean, that is the alternative to where it's being played now.
So they have the speakers on those large poles, since they use them to the volley wall. They have, that's been up for a long time, and they're up, so you have two facing this way and two facing this way. So it surrounds the playground, the yard, but there are two that face this way as well. But when it's live music, the, you know, the musician will come with their own speakers, and I've never stopped to go inside and look how they face it, but if you could picture, like, say the fence is here, here's Sunny Reds, here's Meyer, right here in the corner is where they're stationed to play, if they're facing the music this way, what I hear you saying is that it's better this way as opposed to this way? I would argue that the way sound travels, if it's, the source is here, the distance was to make the disciples go lower, right? So even if it's traveling this way, it's still traveling this way too, right? Because the sound goes this way, it doesn't just go one direction. So I would argue that if it's on 50 feet from my house, it'd be better than 50 feet from his, like, 50 feet away from my property, by the time that music hits my house, the disciples should be significantly lower. And so, and we all have, like, disciples music. We had a download of that ad a while ago, and we just like, oh, it's 85, we got to go. It's like that. And so we've been dealing with that for a long time, but now it's gone. Ever since the pergola went up, the food's outside, so we eat outside, the rats started coming, now there's live music, and it's like, okay, enough is enough.
Ed, Ms. Jamil, you have recordings of the music?
Yes, I have for multiple years. I also record when I call the police. I also, my neighbors are starting to record when I call the police. We have all that.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We're going to refer to our Director of Public Safety and our Commissioner of the Department of Public Works, as well as our Law Department, and we'll look into that.
Much appreciated. Again, if there's anything that we can do around us neighbors, we'd be more than happy to do this.
I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Right, thank you.
Did anybody put any traps out or anything?
Oh, yeah. I guess. We have traps. The neighbor 323 has traps, and we have the county, what do they call it?
Yeah, I was going to say the county.
And 327, they also block. They actually have, the 327 property around the corner, they have doors. They're like, she said she's like outside, like, she's trying to... she tries to sit outside, and she can't, she's, because of the rats.
I've, I've spoken to our animal control, and a lot of the rat issue falls on the county. But I will re-contact him and see what else he can do in that area.
And I did talk to the county, too. They, they were kind enough to call after you planned the request, but...
If, if it's, if it's an inappropriate disposal of garbage issue, and it's on, it's on the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Our Building Inspector needs to look at that.
Well, that was one of the things that went to petition is like, I know we have, like, the, you know, John Murray's been close for a bit, with the reopening it looks like. And then you've got Sunny Reds, you've got three dumpsters, and, you know, within a pretty close proximity, you know, maybe it's a matter of, like, checking if the dumpsters have lids and they're covered. I mean, rats can get into anything, I feel like, today. But, you know, just having like the basic thing, like no trash around the dumpsters, basic code.
I will have the code enforcement people go look at that. But, and I, with all due respect, and I appreciate your position, I just want to make sure we understand that that area is kind of a perfect storm of disruption right now. There's homes being built at the end of North Street, South Street. The Erie County Water Authority and the Erie County Sewer Department have ripped up Abbott Road, have ripped up Willett Road. So while there's normally, and, and now you've got food sources, right? So you've got disruption of, of these normal habitats, right? They're all over the place. And so we just have to keep that in mind. I'm not discounting the concern. I wouldn't want to deal with that either. I'm seeing them on Bedford Avenue, and I'm two blocks away from you. But again, as we're evaluating the problems, who's the source, what's the issue, I don't know if it's necessarily a Business A or a Business B issue. It may be a collection of all of them, plus also the environmental factor of having four large areas, you know, two, two fields, and, you know, sewer lines on Abbott, water lines on Willett, being all disrupted within months of each other. They go somewhere.
Makes sense. That makes sense.
They go somewhere, right?
Right. I mean, it looks at some other cities, what they've done, and they've required businesses to pick up, you know, more than once a week. Other required residents to get fined if they don't cover their trash. Like, there's things that can help mitigate it at some point.
No question. It will, it will definitely do that. But I think we, my, my point, if it's not coming across well, is there's probably an inordinate amount of population, in part, because of a lot of the disruptions going on.
It was from like one or two, like, one or two all summer, every single day. What is that?
I understand. I understand. So I just, I'm just making this statement, not to deflect blame, not to deflect anything, just let's all be aware that there's a lot going on within that small area.
No, that does make sense, though.
Whatever we can do to mitigate that situation, we should, we should do it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we should.
All right, thank you for listening. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, next.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15th, 2024.
I don't lose without minutes, regular meeting of July 15th, 2024.
Maflahe seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahe, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of July 15th, 2024. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Developmental reports, one and two.
All right, I'm going to receive and file departmental reports, one and two.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports, one and two. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Mayor Iafallo requests the City Council approve her and Councilman Sirdike to attend the New York State Fall Conference of Mayors, that is being held in Saratoga Springs from September 16th through September 20th, 2024.
All right, I'm going to search for a request.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. City Attorney requests the City Council approve the ordinance regarding compliance orders with the Code Enforcement Department.
All right, I'm going to move to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. An ordinance amending Chapter 75 of the Building Code, authorizing the Code Enforcement officers to issue a compliance order in writing to remedy any condition or activity found to exist in violation of the Uniform Code, Energy Code, or Chapter 75 of the Building Code.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance written.
Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to adopt ordinance is written. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. City Attorney advises the Council regarding the name change of the seasonal rep attendance to the title of Playground Watcher for the 2024-2025 budget year. On July 30th, 2024, civil service changed the title of the seasonal rep attended to Playground Watcher.
Morano moves to receive and file. Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. City Attorney requests the City Council approve the proposed fire chief contract for August 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2027, and authorize the mayor to execute same.
John?
Yeah, I, I would just ask to speak, and I would ask that this be officially withdrawn from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six of the agenda has been withdrawn. Anderson second.
Fire Chief requests the City Council approve the request to advertise for bids for compliance-based fire equipment, and direct the city clerk to advertise for bids.
All right, I'm going to move to approve request, direct city clerk to advertise for bids.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request, direct city clerk to advertise for bids. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Department of Purchasing requests the City Council approve the ordinance transferring funds between different development accounts from the 2023-2024 budget line for the replacement of a second code enforcement vehicle that is beyond repair.
All right, I'm going to move to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinances, transferring funds from grant matches in the amount of $15,000, demolition of buildings in the amount of $24,995, to budget line code enforcement vehicles totaling $39,995.
All right, I'm going to move to adopt ordinance is written. Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance is written. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Department of Purchasing requests the City Council approve the agreement with Civic Plus for the mass notification system. This will replace the code RED system, which will end on September 2nd, 2024. The Civic Plus system is $3,000 less than the current system. Civic Plus is also a New York State contract pricing.
All right, I'm going to move to approve agreement. Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to approve agreement. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Director of Development, Marketing, and Public Information requests the City Council approve the amendment of Alliance Drive land sale to Empire Building Diagnostics. This modification revises the original sale parameters approved on September 25th, 2023.
All right, I'm going to move to approve. Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve amendment. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Director of Public Safety requests the City Council approve the sale of a 2021 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle. Proceeds will be placed in the Police Operating Budget.
All right, I'm going to move to approve request.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Hamel Edholm Library Director requests the City Council approve the proposed resolution to move forward to secure the funding through the New York State Library Construction Aid Program for replacement of boilers and hot water heater, and direct the mayor and library board of trustees to provide all necessary signatures and documents for the application process.
Morano moves to receive and file Act on Resolution.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Resolution. Maflahe?
I'd like the record to reflect that I'm abstaining from this call.
Anderson? More, uh, Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five, uh, three-zero. Three, yeah, three-two.
Three-zero.
Three-zero. Don't be abstaining.
Uh, resolution for the library construction, construction grants, replace boilers in the amount of $31,660, and a hot water heater in the amount of $1,925, for a total cost of $33,585.
All right, I'm going to move to adopt resolution is written. Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt resolution is written. Maflahe?
I'd like the record to reflect that I'm abstaining from this call.
Anderson? Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried three to zero. Louis Ayaya, resident, requests the City Council approve the closure of the block including Pearl Street between Steelawana and Wilkes-Barre for an outdoor kids' activity event hosted by La Iglesia de Dios. This event is scheduled to take place on August 17th, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
All right, I'm going to move to approve request, refer to Public Works and Public Safety.
Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request, refer to Public Works and Public Safety. Maflahe?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
No.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried three to two. Business registration Clementia Gratacos Spiritual Vibes Botanica LLC, spiritual education and literature, 723 Ridge Road.
All right, I'm going to move to approve, approve business registration.
Maflahe seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahe, to approve business registration. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero. Batha and Ba Timbo One Auto Repairs Corporation Automotive Repair and Technology, 1212 Abbott Road.
Morano moves to approve business registration.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve business registration. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five-zero.
Any council members table items over business at this, at this time?
Yeah, I got a question. Where do we stand on the traffic light at Steelawana? A traffic light at Steelawana? The planning phase is complete. Now, the second phase, so the first is planning, that's complete. Now the second phase is going through approval, through the lead architect. Okay, engineer, excuse me, engineer. So once we do that, then we go out for bid. Once we go out to bid, then we choose the contractor. After we choose the contractor, then the work begins. So as of right now, I don't have estimated time of construction.
Do you think we have to get this done before winter?
No.
You know, I, I'd like to propose something, that because we can't do this, many municipalities have crosswalking across major roads like that, where if a pedestrian steps into there, then it's the, people need to stop. I mean, if it's, it's been, we've been working on this. John and I have been working on this for over four years. And we need something to protect these people from crossing the street. It's a terrible situation there, and I, I don't know if that's a possibility.
That would actually be more of a danger, in my opinion, than having...
I don't agree with you at all.
Having a high-speed area of traffic...
It's not a high-speed area. It's 30 miles an hour.
If you would allow me the courtesy to speak...
Well, you're saying things that aren't true.
The traffic of Ridge Road is not like the traffic of Wilkes-Barre crossing onto Pearl, Pearl Avenue. Stop signs would not be beneficial at the intersection of Steelawana and, and Steelawana and Ridge. Based on how the design of the street is, you have, you have multi-cars parked that would prevent or impede the visibility of people crossing to the average driver who is not used to having a stop sign at that intersection. So you're giving these individuals false hope that that stop sign is going to protect them if they were to walk into the street. So you're actually creating a danger zone versus a safety zone, in my opinion.
So, so let me ask you this. So there is nothing there right now. So how do, how do you expect people to get across the street? What are they doing? They, they just rolling the dice, taking the chances? At least this would give something. So if somebody gets hit there, they're probably going to sue the city, because there's no traffic light in the First Ward. Not one traffic light.
I believe my position was very firm, and that would, that's what the incentive was to actually beg for, for the funding to get it from Tim Kennedy, to place a traffic light at the, at the corner of Steelawana and Ridge Road, where legislator Gilmore was very gracious in giving the city $250,000, $250,000, which the previous City Council voted to put a Hawk Light system, which is not, is not within the design for a, for an intersection. Those are meant for the inside of a block, similar to the library, and what some schools have that are located within a block, not at an intersection. So that was not feasible to even pursue. How it passed a vote is beyond me. So getting the funding to have a full-fledged light is the, what I believe the best option. However, we were informed, and we did vote on having a full-fledged light with everyone here, that passed. Tim Kennedy's office was great and given us the additional funding that was required to put up the light. The last time I had spoken with directors that were working on this, it was that in the third quarter, which we were told was August, September, would be the completion of this project. I, like you, Dean, Councilman Moretti, very, very frustrated that it hasn't been set up yet. The delay is a delay of safety. It's a delay of having people be able to operate a vehicle and walk safely within that area. There hasn't been a stoplight on Ridge Road, as you have stated, Councilman Moretti, for a decade, possibly longer than a decade. And the fact that there's two schools on